Senior High School Auditorium, nine thirty, Wusnet Jeff Wood, West Range, Rhode Island. Item C, the Towne Clark's Office. All offices will be closed Wednesday through June fifth in order that the staff can attend the funeral service for a coworker's spouse. And on that point, I'd like to say it was Robert Whitford that passed away. He used to be a DPW worker, and he's probably, what other words can we use to describe him, Cal? It's one of a kind.
I've known him longer than the rest of you.
He went to school with him.
Well, let it happen. I also was moderator of many financial meetings, and he always had plenty to say. God bless him, may he rest in peace. Excuse me, before you move on, may I say something? Well, from a few of you here and whoever may be watching, I just want to say kudos to the parade committee. The parade that we saw last Sunday was really an accomplishment. This program is just one of the best, and so I just thank that sort of to all of you who made that happen. Thank you.
Number four, approve the agenda order. Does anybody need to move or remove anything?
I'm not removing. Change in the order, do we?
Changing the order itself, yeah.
Nobody needs to change yours, that motion.
Motion to approve the agenda order?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, approve of consent.
I have four rentals. You have four rentals?
Yeah.
My communications.
Cal, you got anything under communication?
No, I don't, thank you.
Olivia?
Nope, I'm all set, thanks.
Diane?
Yeah, were we gonna discuss the number twelve, which was the rental? Should I pull back to discuss that?
It's on here. Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we'll be discussing that.
Okay. And I need to pull number five, approval of minutes.
Okay, could you do this one?
Number five, and then the five, communications.
Approval of minutes.
Minutes.
Number five.
Right D?
So Diane, you didn't have any communications in need if you do?
No.
Your own phone bills or bill cheater, any of those? Yep. All right, minutes. So, everybody was here for the April eighth meeting. Cal, you were not here for the twenty ninth? And Diane, you were not here for the budget, budget portion of May second, but you were here for the executive session meeting. And everybody, oh, the May sixth meeting, I didn't get it done.
Okay, so.
So you make a motion on each one?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes minus equal twenty ninth for Cal. All in favor?
Minus one.
Diane's, well, I'll do that for the second vote.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval for the council's special meeting. Diane was here for that. She was not here for the budget public here in May second, two thousand twenty four. Say, all in favor?
Aye. Excuse me, Lynn, did you make note that I abstained in approving that one, please?
Um, yes.
The one twenty ninth, I believe, was a big one.
And then you abstained on that one. Okay, now you make motions to accept. Consent agenda is amended.
You're dropping six and seven, right?
Yes. You don't want to?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any second.
I'll second.
Okay, too good. Number six, vacancies and appointments, personnel board. Continue to oppose. Conservation Commission, have you heard back from anybody?
No, I sent that letter asking to see if they could get anybody else on board, and I haven't heard back.
Okay, continue to oppose that one.
May I interrupt? I thought we did have a communication for someone who had suggested they would like to have joined. I think that was David DeFrancesco.
I'm not talking about anybody.
Well, I understand that.
I know the letters that went out, people that expressed an interest.
Right, but there was a letter we had received, I think, I don't know, a year ago or wasn't a year ago, that you were putting on file. I think that was David DeFrancesco who speaks about.
Want me to check to see if he's still interested?
Yes, I, as far as I know, I think he is, but I'm sorry.
Did Jen Craig get someone into it?
Excuse me, may I speak to the, well, with the David DeFrancesco thing that I saw, he has his resume here, and he indicated he was interested.
What was the date of that?
I beg your pardon? David?
No date.
Oh, the date. January twenty eighth of two thousand twenty one, which you have last Monday first, though. But then, I beg your, why don't you make sure, write to him, communicate with him, say if he is still interested. Thank you. Well, that brings us to the six. If he, if he said yes, first, we have a change to get, seven, so, getting there.
Item D, resignations, Jensen Tavares, General Control Officer.
Yes, how you doing? Jensen is definitely not gonna be with us after the twenty ninth, and I asked to see if he could open.
Of June?
Yes.
You two opening up. We can't accept his resignation till we lose, correct?
Pending that date maybe.
But I, I think that can't we both, someone opposed?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It's a hot spot, she's getting in trouble filling them holes over there.
Second. Would you think it was inappropriate, that we're unopposed, no evidence?
No, 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 no.
No, you were asking about accepting his resignation.
He's given his notice, at least he gave you notice.
Yeah, it's a young lady.
Oh, he, I'm sorry, shame.
So, motion to post in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Item C, appointments, Exeter Rural Land Preservation Trust Committee members, two, to serve four-year term, beginning date of appointment. That'll then continue to oppose. June rail hearing board alternate member to serve unexpired term ending November sixth, two thousand twenty six. Continue to oppose. Tax border review, alternate member to serve unexpired term ending August to two thousand twenty four. Continue to oppose. Works, worker.
Yeah.
That is posted now, correct?
It is. This will be the, going into the second month. We do have a candidate. It's all hinging on a pre-qual drug screen and a BCI being run. So unfortunately, the timing didn't land where it could be hired by today.
Continue to oppose that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah, I just think that I'd like the record to show that that's a process that DPW director's going through now, prior hiring, and just to make sure that there are no surprises. So I think that's, it's a good thing.
I agree. Thanks, Cal.
I know why, because you wanna make sure everything's okay.
Yes, sir.
For the record, I think that should be stated. Thank you.
Item D, expiring terms. One is Scott Mallard, planning board member, term expires July one, two thousand twenty four. I'm gonna take all three of these. Michael Byers, planning board member, that is an alternate position, I believe, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
That term expires July one, two thousand twenty four. And Warren Andrews, zoning board review, that term expires July one, two thousand twenty four. We've already received two letters. I'm gonna make a motion to post this in a at the July meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Number seven. Public entertainment license application, Earl Adams applicant to hold Rhode Island National Guard's League Fest airborne soldier competition at his address three hundred Hoghouse Hill Road, Exeter, Rhode Island, on Saturday, August third, two thousand twenty four. Ring date is Sunday, August fourth, two thousand twenty four, from eight AM to five PM. I need a motion to approve the public hearing. So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Come on up, Earl, let us know what we're doing.
As we've done now for three years, the Rhode Island National Guard has their annual, this is the forty-first or forty-second annual League Fest competition, which hosts paratroopers from around the world, from countries around the world, and from every state in the union in which the Rhode Island National Guard will spend a week of training. These paratroopers will dropping in and jumping over the farm in Exeter. They train at URI, they start arriving approximately a week early, they work on a simulator, they go through a lot of ground training, and then they'll do a drive run on Thursday prior to the jump. The competition is on Saturday, the third. The competition is basically troops dropping in from Chinook helicopters, helicopters land unless there's an emergency. The troops are bussed out by buses in oily fashion, back to the base so they can do it again, and we open up the farm for viewing for the open public. We park the cars in a open field in the back of Hoghouse Hill Road, three hundred Hoghouse Hill Road, and there are military police, military medics. There's probably around three to four hundred soldiers organizing and supporting the whole thing. They have helicopters on the ground for children to view, and maybe a small recruiting station. So the entertainment license is that there for the National Guard to just show what they do, and it's been very successful. We haven't had any traffic issues that I know of. They come in orderly, they park off the road, we've got MPs, I think Scope's usually there, watching what's going on, and then they orderly leave throughout the course of the day. People come and go from approximately eight o'clock in the morning to five o'clock at night.
Question. Yes, the Engineered Battalion gonna be there again this year, the week before?
Uh, we're not sure. There's.
This was a point of contention last year. One individual was complaining, how dare you let these military trucks drive on the road? And Hal Morgan beat me to the answer on that one, and I went up and visited with the people, and the commanding officers of both units couldn't thank us enough, because these kids do not get very many places to use this equipment for practice. They actually, where the parking out of Hoghouse Hill Road was beneficial in two ways. There was a small road there, they made that road, that road's gotta be one thirty foot wide now.
Yes.
Basically, also constructed a fire road through the middle of the woods for a good three quarters of a mile.
So what, what they did last year is they asked us permission to bring the Construction Battalion there for two weeks, which was their National Guard training period.
Annual training.
The annual training. So they brought, they brought the guard, and they brought bulldozers, they brought road graders, they brought rollers. We, myself, purchased all the materials, so none of the materials were poured in by the Guard, they were all purchased by ourselves and our family. They went through, they stumped a fire road through the middle of the farm. It's approximately a mile, we call it dignitary drive, in honor of the generals that drive over it. And the group that was there was mostly eighteen, nineteen, and twenty year old kids right out of Oak Hill, that had never seen the country, never seen a bulldozer, never seen a grader. And at the end of the two weeks, they were fueling trucks, grading roads, rolling roads, putting the perfect ground on it, and they're supervised by the management down there, which are all operating engineers in their real lives. So it was a very, very useful training facility. They did use five or six very, very small dump trucks, they look like they're big military vehicles, but they hold five yards of dirt. So they're about the size of a F three fifty or an F four fifty. I don't think the trucks weigh over about twenty thousand pounds fully loaded. I think that was the issue, is that they, they were concerned over these military trucks coming and going, hauling these little tiny loads of gravel. So they have been invited back. It's all about timing, about where they are, other parts of the country. So if they don't do it prior to, they'll do it as a cleanup after. But what they did, I thought was most beneficial, is they created, right after the fire last year, they created an access road from Hoghouse Hill Road to south, all the way in through, next to the Mecham property, the Waldo Hills, to the South Kingston boundary. So if there's any fire apparatus has to go in. This year, they are scheduled to help us build a road from Glen Rock Road to our pond. We have a private pond in which it will also second as access for the fire department to get water in an emergency if they've gotta pull out of the pond with a dry hydrant. So we don't know if that's gonna take place, but if they do, it's, it's just training, basic training for the recruits.
Okay. Anybody in the council, any questions?
You're all invited. It's, it's fine for the kids, it's fine for the adults?
I was just gonna say, only for the record, Earl, I see that the brothers have been duly noticed, same here. We've had not any big issues in the neighborhood at all.
Never had, no, not one single complaint about the actual jump day. And then I do know that several retired military people lined the roads with American flags the night before, and we've got a couple news crews that are usually there, so it's very public.
I see the cut.
It's on channel ten, it's on channel twelve. So it's good publication, and it's a, it's a fun time. And there was just one small injury last year, a paratrooper, I think he hit a truck.
Oh.
Which was the year before they hit their house?
Year before they hit my house. They le, no, they didn't that, they landed on the deck. But the simulator, they use a simulator, so they really got very accurate this year. So you're all invited. There might be a field day, and if they do, it'll be published, and it'll be brought to you then, as we have every year, open it up to anybody who wants to come from the fire department, et cetera. We work with Scope, we work with the fire department, we work with the rescue. I think only one person had a little heat exhaustion last year from being, you know, hot and dry.
They also have the medical teams set up in tents that are also.
Correct. There are civilian medical teams to take care of the public, and there are medical teams that are in every helicopter and for the troops. And it's a good time, and it's very, very much appreciated by the National Guard. It's only been held in Rhode Island, it's like the America's Cup. If we lose it, we lose it forever. It will never come back.
It's a tradition. I jumped in nineteen eighty-two, when it first started.
Speaking of helicopters, did I hear that some people, that helicopter rides? I'm not looking at the one. Maybe I didn't hear that.
We toured the helicopter, we didn't ride.
Oh, didn't ride, I see.
Would you like a helicopter?
No.
They do, they do put together a promotional where, depending on weather permitting, several weeks before, they might open up for a small group of people from the town, basically, the town officials, if you wanna go through the training and to take, and go up, and for, they'll dispatch out a Quonset, they'll show you the route, they'll show you the training facility. But that could all be arranged with Major Nelson, who runs the facility.
I'll let the younger people take advantage of that.
But there's a, there's a tremendous amount, one thing I know is a tremendous amount of retired military personnel from the town here that have been in Vietnam, World War Two, Korean War, Hal Morgan, several others, I think, Olivia, I think your father.
I don't speak, okay.
Okay, but.
He, he attended.
Mr. DeFrancesco attended there. So you see a lot of people, you see a lot of military hats from retired soldiers that appreciate being there and being back in the thick of it after thirty, forty years of being retired from the military.
Any questions for the public? Motion to oppose the public hearing. So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I forgot I had one thing to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lynn.
Just that hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents is due in certified mailing and advertising.
The problem, checks in the mail tomorrow. Send me an email.
Okay. All right, someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the League Fest on August third and fourth at Earl Adams, three hundred Hoghouse Hill Road.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight is public comment.
Thank you.
And Lisa Davis.
Lisa Davis, one forty-six, Beechwood Hill Trail. Nothing on the national circus to distract us from our local sideshow. Thirty-four counts, that's a lot. We more than twenty-four ethics groups are divisions. Recent polls still put Trump in the lead, so maybe he'll join that list of those who roast from the ashes like Sianzi and Ellis, time will tell. In local news, more ethics violence for different council members are stumping for her uncle's fifty K share and for the planning board share after he heard not once but twice to fix his violence. Typical story, unreported land ownership in positions. Lobbying is gonna be more of an IRS issue, because they claim charity status to collect tax deductible contributions, but lost their state permit to do that two years ago, but no ending tax return. Where have we heard that before? Last P B meeting was a breath of fresh air, seeing Crossman working with Rhode Island Roads engineer, together making a project better for all. We should do that with roads. Some historical trivia, Matt Scheck and Shwayd both inspected Cave of Richie and found no issues. Kudos to Bill DiBisquale sorting that. Here we are, maybe fixing the street map, some ten years after we forgot to get the final report. One down, maybe ten left. Including Stony Lane, this abandonment created an illegal lot by taking away eleven dash two dash four's legal street furniture. The decision language is bad, because it doesn't cover the north offshoot to lock eleven dash two dash four. That section still shows as town road, not as part of Stony Lane, it does not show as part of the abandonment, and it still provides access to eleven two four. In that September meeting, Cal Ellis read into the record that the planning board reviewed and sees no reason not to accept the proposed changes, and finds that the amendment is not inconsistent with the town of Exeter's comprehensive plan. It's a problem. It sounds like the claims on the planning board approval for Brookridge, however, because there's no memo in the council's records for that meeting. Also, no record in the planning board minutes from May through October twenty nineteen saying any such thing. Never issued a memo or directed anyone else to do it. Brookridge, the Ethics Commission, Scheck, WCRPC, Treasurer and Director, Ethics, 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 Ethics,[1537.12]
Possible in other communities that they might be the ones to talk to the DPW. He goes not to us, but to a town manager and says, this is what I need, and then the process begins. I'm not sure. I don't know the answer to that.
Like I said, I'm gonna do some research and just haven't had time in the last.
Well, that's okay.
The first I heard of this company is once you brought it up.
And likewise, also for me, but Dan, when you speak about your, your experiences, the private sector is obviously different than what we have to deal with as a municipal sector.
Well, like the lady who just said about going on the town webpage and hitting bid, North Kingston did something with their webpage. It used to be about the RFPs. It's not there anymore. I had to call the water department. They had to email it to me.
But I want, well.
They got an IT department.
But then question may be, why isn't that available?
Why did it disappear?
I mean, that raises a good question. That's a good point that needs, I think, to be answered. But the other communities that Dory's pointing out, I wonder how they process it. I bet it's different than what we do, or maybe not.
Let's do that. Let's leave it here for next month. Everybody can do some research and see if we can get some answers.
Can, well, sorry, you, Dan. Can, can, do you mind call, checking around to see what you, see what you, so we've got a couple people, if not more.
Yeah, 'cause like I said, when I was sitting there a month ago at North Kingston on a bid, and here they are on the list. They don't even have that one on their webpage. I mean, they keep rebuilding them and making them less user-friendly.
Well, Dan, I move that we continue this item, unfinished business.
Second, all in favor?
All right. Let's investigate. Not, we're not shutting the door.
No, that's fine. I really do appreciate your attention.
Thanks.
Dory, you have another one, man?
Yes.
Oh, I need to.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Rob, Dory, is this a company that's in all fifty states or is it?
Yeah, they are.
They must have advertising or something on there to pay for it. I'll find out.
Yeah, I think we can go under there. No, it's also.
Well, that may be one of them. Yeah, but she says it's free. No, she says it's, that's what she said.
I get what you're saying, Ken.
I do.
I get it.
Okay, item number C, the request to close town offices Friday, July 2, 2024.
So move for discussion?
Second, this was brought to my attention. I have no issues with it because someone's gonna be here.
Are you sure?
That's, that's, that's my discussion, that we should allow the staff, you know, that it's a long-standing employee's responsibility.
No, this is not that. This is July fifth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
July fifth is a Friday.
Remember, they didn't want summer Fridays.
I beg your pardon? You've already decided that it's gonna close this week. This is a different environment. It's not June.
Summer Fridays were objected.
I beg your pardon? Well, I did, I did move, move to consider. It's been seconded. All right, well, let's get it. I just thought I'd raise that issue.
Was there a motion to approve to discuss?
No, I just said to, yeah, move. I think I said move to approve.
A motion to, to, for July fifth, not December fifth.
No, no, move to approve.
That's how open the discussion is.
Now we discuss.
You got a second? I did. Okay, yeah. And then we started discussing that. How does it work? Do they use vacation time? Or how does that, how does that work? How does that get paid for?
If you approved that they would, the town hall would close, they would not have to use vacation or personal. But I know, I, already a few people have expressed that they will not be here, so.
It's gonna be a long weekend where we then.
Well, that's where they would take vacation time?
Probably. If you close the town offices, they don't, they don't have to use, if you don't close, they're gonna take their vacation sick time.
And the issue is if, if enough people aren't here, then it's, then it's very few people here, and that could cause an issue.
It will be a limit myself, as far as our experience.
That was a question. So if a lot of people take the time off, and it's only a few people here, does that, does that cause an issue for the office?
No, I mean, because they're taking their time. And if it's just me and Maria, I think time is, they know we're not, yeah, gonna close.
So we're rewarding people for telling us in advance that they're not gonna come in, and they would have to use their sick time or their vacation time, fine. But now we're going to give them a Friday off, paid?
Like it was a holiday.
Paid?
Yeah, it's just a request to get it, you know, to, they take those.
A four-day weekend for them.
Yeah, it's very nice, isn't it?
It's a nice thing to do, but.
We did it last year.
We've done it, we've done it when it falls like this at Christmas, we've done it.
It makes sense, but nobody liked summer Fridays last month.
But that's just one. I, I.
I know, four or eight Fridays would have been way too much, but.
Well, for discussion, I would like to ask, Rob, could you, can you take a four-day weekend with your guys? I mean, I'm just saying.
These are straight good luck.
Because part of the reason why summer Fridays allegedly wouldn't work is because DPW couldn't do it. So can DPW take July fifth off?
Well, it would be high pressure. I'm already up against it, so I mean, we are, we have a big job to do. We're shorthanded. We're, they're clocking against us. If we, if we don't do it, and they catch wind of it, I'm gonna catch, you know, morale issue the opposite way.
Yeah.
For me, I'm just saying. It's, it puts me in a tough spot. No, I can't. I mean, I got June teeth coming up. You know, it's, it's like, there's a lot.
I suspected that the answer was no.
I have a lot going on. I got time schedules and crunches and then BEM and all these things that are not working in our favor, to be quite frank.
And that was a big factor in the summer Fridays also, because they couldn't do it. So they can't do this, so.
But I believe, like, I wish that departments, like my department, didn't link theirs, because I do agree that these, this office definitely, you know, needs it.
I agree a hundred percent.
So how it links to me and my responsibilities, it's.
It makes no sense, right?
I sit here lying to you.
How do you do for one and not for the other? To me, I ever.
That's, that's where it puts me in a, in a pickle. Because if they caught wind of it, even that Friday thing that you suggested before, if I turn that down, and, and I, I would be the bad guy. And I have good morale at my place right now, and they all have, we have mutual respect. And it's because we're all working as a team to go that way. And if they found out that I was able to not, because of my opinion or my judgment, took something that they could have had for free, that would be, it could be used against me, which would not work well, because I, morale is picking up, please.
It wouldn't help you.
It would not.
Yeah.
But I, you know, again, it's a tough pickle to even be in.
Yeah, I don't know why or how it happened in this town. I understand they're town employees, all under the same umbrella, but you are a totally different department.
Well, the union is, is the answer to that, right?
Yeah, but there are two different contracts for, the DPW is one contract.
Well, there's three, right? Because you got the animal control, where?
They're under us. The animal and transfer station are under.
Okay, so there's two, you're correct.
It's all one. It's all one.
Right. I would love my guys to be able to have that day off. I would love to bring that great news to them.
But that's not feasible.
Especially, how much work am I, to be honest with you, how much work? It's just like the day before Christmas. How much work you really getting on? You got, what, Thursday's the fourth, and we have that off, and then Friday, that's what you're talking about? I could see that being like the dragon, but.
So what you're saying, changing the way you're waiting and changing the mind?
Well, I know. I'm, I'm giving you everything, all my thoughts, because.
What's your, what's your opinion?
Well, don't push it.
Well, my opinion, my opinion is I think, my opinion is I think they deserve it. I would love to give it to them. But does that work with my timeframe? No. That's my, but, so my opinion, the facts are, I would love to give it to them. I'd love to go tomorrow morning and say, hey, everybody, council just gave this day off. But can I really finish the work that I, I'm not gonna, I don't know. I'm, I'm, the, the timeline in some instances is almost unreachable, as you've seen in my note, my letter recently. Anyway, I would love to give that good news to my guys. I think they deserve it, and all the above.
I have a unique suggestion. Tell them they can have a long weekend, but the pre, prior, or the following Saturday, you need them to come in, not overtime. Not overtime. All right, then you don't give them a long weekend.
No, no, sure.
If you laugh, then it's, they'll give them a long weekend. That's all right.
They are so stuck in their schedules, it's like, union-minded folks, I'm sorry if anyone's here, but.
Probably have those guys do a side job on Saturdays somewhere.
True, including me.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Pickle. Really? Tough spot.
It is what it is.
Yeah.
If we gave it to everybody, it'd kill you.
We would make do. They'll put, they'll put twice the hard work into, just to, you know.
Because like you just said, I think that Friday and Thursday are updated, and they're not gonna do anything on Friday.
Well, not, it's not, nothing.
No, but you're not gonna get the quality work.
We even happen to be in the military, it might be seventy-eight percent efficiency.
Correct.
What do you have, though? You got six guys, right?
I got five guys, Bill Brown and me.
Yeah, and a lot of these guys are taking vacations all summer long.
Yeah.
You're gonna be shorthanded all summer to begin with, so.
So far, they've been real fair. Again, they know I have a big job, and we have a good team, and they're, they're, they work, they're working hard for me. And I work hard for them, and it's like, is one day gonna really matter? No. I guess after, to give you my opinion, one day is not gonna kill it. I, I bet you the morale boost would send it through the roof, and they'd work that much harder for me. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, can you just have a floating day? Did they get a floating day off? No.
I just don't wanna go into this thing, because now we just entered comp time and like.
Okay.
So we gotta, not, they got, they're not spoiled, but they got a great package here at the Town of Exeter, I believe. They, they really do. And they work hard for it, don't get me wrong. And we got quality folks.
How about if we, if we make a motion to approve, we may have a motion to approve it, but how about if we ask you, if we approve it under the condition that you explain to them that you got, they got a four-day weekend, and when they come back, you're doing it, you gotta get that.
They're gonna do that anyways, Mike, and yes, I would do that. They are, I'm telling you, that's my team, I'm telling you, they're, they're, they work hard for us.
Well, you need to.
Because of.
Good humble leadership. Now, Calvin, you wanna amend your motion?
No, I, no, just, no, but I just wanna say you could go and tell them, this is what the council said. They want you to, they appreciate you. Watch every one weekend, but the council said, will you please come back Monday, or whatever the date is, ready to go, 'cause you know we gotta.
I really think, you know, I think that.
Here we'll be losing the day too. We gotta make it, make it up on Monday, Tuesday.
Does everybody really wanna do this? Is that something that, we don't, I mean, I, I, I love to, I, I'm a hot ball, maybe, I love to work, I don't like to get behind. But do you guys really want this?
I feel like I've been behind since I've been in this spot, to be honest with you. I've been working up against, you know what I mean? Think about it, all the things we've been through here. Right? And we're getting it done, so.
I'm not sure what you just said. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to put you in a spot. I just, I don't understand what you just said. Is that favorable?
It is favorable to, to this time. What's it gonna, what's, if, I, I think we can manage, and like you said, get that, um, that push behind them. They'll, they'll come hard for us, um, coming back, so I'm for it.
All right. So what was the motion? Can we vote on, approve now? A motion was to approve? And discuss. So now, uh, you can vote. To close all town offices, including public works. Now, the animal shelter, someone still has to show up every day.
So are they getting paid overtime now, since this is a holiday now?
I know the animal shelter does. It's in the contract.
Well, not if it's a floater. If it's, they would get straight time.
There'll probably be one employee and a floater per shift or something.
Yeah. How does that work as far as morale goes?
Well, they could get a floating day or something.
Just give them time and a half. If you have to feed the animals and water the animals.
They do anyway, it's the way it is, because they're in there at Christmas or.
Oh, yeah.
I know, they do, they do anyways, but now they're in there, and everybody else got the day off, well, so.
Well, they do. They never get a day off.
I know, but.
You know, they just, it's how you, it's more efficient.
Got it.
Are they normally open on Friday?
Three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
They're all closed, so they'll close too, I'm sure.
We have two salary, and then depending on who might be scheduled for that Friday, but they might be able to.
If they want.
But then our.
Again, they deserve it too. I mean, honestly, they're beyond, I mean.
And I'm saying you guys, but I know it's not you two, but these guys are getting a free day that are here. You guys are getting a free day, but the library, we're like, shit.
How weird. Well, if you approve this, I would send it to the library, all his departments.
But somebody just said, oh, if they're, if they want to or not. Did you just say that?
I don't know, it's scheduled, so if they have something scheduled for the day after, or they anticipate.
So they, they may not.
They're open on Saturday?
They'll close down on Friday.
No, they're open Saturday.
Library's open on Saturday?
Yeah, library's open on Saturday. We're not, we're telling them to close four days? The weather?
No.
No.
Just the day.
If you tell them the option, I'll give them the option of closing on Friday.
I don't think you should give them the option.
Well, no, but, well, or tell them they, all right, Dan.
Yeah, because just like Rob's guys, if they get a free day, the people that work at the library, I think, would want their free day. Nope. Same, same thing.
Take occasion, yeah.
Well, the library would be included. It's just Friday.
I am fifty-fifty, right down the middle. Someone pushed me on one side.
Well, some people will take the day off, and some departments are gonna be closed. That's what's gonna happen. Library could decide to, or maybe take, make a vacation day and stuff. It'll be closed. Here we'll have different lots closed, 'cause they're taking their vacation or sick time. It'll be closed. You can just leave it as is. Well, the library, the library will stay open. Well, they're open on Saturday. They are, they're July. They'll have been drinking. But the animal shelter, they have to feed the animals and put in the packages and all that, so that day seems a little.
Anybody got a coin? I need a coin to flip.
I just have to ask a question.
I just withdraw the request.
Excuse me.
I just want to be, come around.
Well, can I just ask a question? I know, regarding this motion, because it seems to have gotten out of hand, and I. But on Fourth of July holiday for all, does anyone tend to the animals in the pen?
Yes, they have to be tended.
It's three hundred and sixty-five days.
Well, that's what I thought. So, that's what I thought. So they'll be there that day. They could go the next day. I can give them time and a half. I don't know, I could just keep on if they.
I think that sounds fair. I mean, they're making eighteen and seventeen, fifteen dollars an hour. Really? And they're dedicated, even these younger people.
Well, except the ones that don't stay, like this young lady.
She's moving on for a career move. Nobody can say anything to that.
No, no, you can't, no, I wouldn't either. But nothing, nothing keeps them for, for that, you know, amount of money.
Except for maybe little things like this.
Yeah.
On a cup.
Welcome to the year show.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dan, this is new. Dan, this is old.
Right.
The last, the last one? The last motion?
I'm still the same one. Proven, discussed.
I'm gonna retract. Is reworded a different way, Cal?
No, I don't think so. I just, no. I'll leave it. Hey, I feel like I'm in the ashcan anyway, so.
No, you gotta retract your motions. Yeah.
You gotta retract, you gotta retract?
I didn't say do that.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you want me to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, so.
All right, I'll look throughout my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
There you go. Let's see what happens.
All right. I will make a motion to grant the request for close the town offices and public works on Friday, July fifth. The library is open to discussion depending on their schedule. That's my motion. What does that mean? Should we sit with the library? We don't fill what their schedule is. If they've got some kids scheduled Friday or Saturday, no. They might have a workshop. I don't know.
Are we gonna pay them time and a half too, since?
We need a second, please.
Second, thank you. Well, so the, the two salary people know, and then usually it'd be a fifteen-hour, so I would say no.
It's like pending availability.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say.
That works. Pending availability of libraries now.
We'll reschedule.
We'll reschedule.
Second, any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Closed?
No.
No.
Three, two? Okay. You were a yes?
I said yes.
You were a yes? I was a yes.
I don't usually say yes to emotions, but.
So it was great.
Okay, so that is passed.
We want to close, close all the town offices with DPW, and leave the library open to discussion depending on their schedule. Three yeses, eleven no.
Yeah, okay. Okay, item D, increase community notification awareness, quick send system.
I said the informational end. It's by Robert. She goes on, and Maria.
That was the, they're gonna be out, right?
No, it's gonna be a text message.
Yeah, the text messaging, yeah, in front of this, okay.
We have an appointment, um, to, uh, the, um, you know, to look at the specifications, the packages as far as cost, and also whatever training that they can provide, um, sometime, I think, the twenty-first? Twenty, twenty-first?
Well, then I'll move that we, consider, that we postpone, continue this item till, till that meeting. Thank you for at least looking into it.
Didn't we already approve this?
Yeah, you can come off.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, oh, we already said yes, so we've sent you, I don't remember who did that.
Yeah, the library, we can just remove that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good. Are you gonna tell us more about it later after you?
We don't have to know, especially you don't have to know.
You don't have to know. What if I wanna be notified? What if I wanna be notified?
Well, then when it's up and running.
Give you a cell phone number.
They'll get you connected.
That's cruel.
Probably have that stuff on the, on that meeting, or whatever, yeah.
That's disrespectful.
That's, that's what I am.
We are not.
Super disrespectful.
Next up is item B, Rhode Island State Archives, Town of Exeter, convened the archive service day host, August sixth, sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
So I got my note. I applied for grant. They are supplying us a thousand dollars' worth of archival folders, boxes, and such. But they're also gonna come spend the day with us, August sixteenth, to look at how we store documents, what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong. And they have a retention schedule of older documents. Um, we have to go through all the documents, list them, give the, uh, clause of their retention schedule, and they approve it. So they'll approve them right, right on site. We can clean up some space in the basement, because everybody's shelves are getting too full. And if some departments are moving, then we won't be moving stuff, we don't. So, and then we're gonna have shred it, and we took Cal's recommendation, maybe we'll have shred it come on a Saturday in the parking lot for the community. And we'll use Cooksend to light everybody up.
So it's actually the community, so you could bring?
Yep.
Homecoming still in there?
Well, like many other places have done in the past, that they don't do anymore, it works well.
Yeah, we've done it at the school.
Is there a limit to it?
I don't know.
You bring a box. They take a box, they empty the box, they give the empty box back to you, and you move on it.
Excellent.
Then if people have to pull up or back up on Widow Sweet Road for that event, it's worth it. And if nobody knows about it, it'll only be a few people.
Yeah, well, like, on Cooksend.
Well, I don't do that. I don't say anything about it.
It will.
And when shredding?
But they're shredding and taking, and we can get the credits of the tonnage. You're right, we can't take the shredded, but that company's gonna take it.
Yeah.
And we get the tonnage.
Yeah, is it good, good or bad?
It's great.
Oh, good?
It goes towards our virgin plan.
Nice.
Good?
Paper's heavy.
See, you should, you could give out little things at.
We're not supposed to take shredded paper?
Transfer station.
Over there?
How do you get the, the paperwork, the documentation to show that that's against the tonnage?
From that shredded company. We request them to give the tonnage when they dump it. They come in an empty truck, when they dump it, they give us the numbers.
Nice.
We win?
Yes.
All right, here's, here's what I'd like to say about this. When, uh, I'm gonna ask, we'll make a motion, but the highlight, the thumbnail sketch of what you've told us, can we include that in tonight's minutes, so that people know what this is about? Could you do that? Because what you sent to us about what you can do here is, is perfect. Your initiative is, kudos to you for it. And so I'd like it to be reflected in the minutes of tonight's meeting, please, somehow, not three, not ten paragraphs, just words. So would you like a, a motion from us to, to you, to, to investigate the possibility of a town-wide shredding event? Or, I don't, you just wanted to.
No, I'm just gonna do that as part of this, um, because we're gonna have to get rid of what we get rid of, so we have to get shredded here, but just that. I'm just gonna see if I can make it a community time as well.
I think it's.
But what I need is to direct it, I'm a penalty to all the departments to get that, that is done before August sixteenth.
Exactly.
So I can go and ask, and.
No, no, no. I, I, I move that you direct all departments to, to review their, and, and purge what they think can be purged, under the advice of the archivists that are coming.
I'll second that. Thank you.
There was a motion.
Okay, one second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, I have to procure a, a year for the inspectors, and I just gotta come up with a little bit of money. Where do you get your, like, safety vests and that? I guess that's what they're wondering, where do they get this gear?
There's a couple different vendors that come around, um, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I could get some emails out to whoever to.
I mean, I, I go working gear and a facade.
Working gear, I think, is expensive. It's good quality.
Yeah.
I've ordered myself for Galls.
I believe in quality myself instead of quantity.
Yeah, 'cause like they're doing the inspections on these, so.
Right.
But so many farms.
So I always gotta take my vest.
What, what Scott has on that says.
Reflecting that's the hard hat.
This I had made at the, um, the sign company. I had made a sign, he did the jersey, but I bought the jersey from Galls. And the vests that I wear when we're out on doing details all came from Galls. These hats came from Galls.
It's like a vending group.
It's called J A Galls.
It's a lot of stuff from China.
Galls.
Galls.
They probably want something with the Town of Exeter on it or something. That's what you get.
Yeah. Well, classic signs is a fantastic job with embroidery or screen printing, and you get any garment that you want as well.
You need the hard hat, then I'll do it.
Yeah, or like that vending group that I have access to, they have a catalog that I could share with whoever.
If you give me the contact information, I can forward it to all four of them, and then they can contact those, if you have a rep or something, and those.
Okay, I do.
Yeah. I guess Rob gave me the contact to, the guy that did the embroidery.
Yeah, yeah. They, they wanted something that identified who they were.
Sure, like Dory's shirt. I think Dory, we use it a lot with that guy who did the sign, and he does a fantastic job.
We do not have badges.
I was just gonna say, didn't we talk about badges?
Yeah, Rob, like you were saying, the insignia was mine. She's not.
Oh, really? You did it already. Well, that's something.
I already did?
Oh, you did?
She used mine.
Okay, so we can take care of that, we can take that off there, or do we need to leave that on?
Well, I was just gonna, I was just gonna make, make a motion to, to directly the work to get some information, and then discuss with the inspectors what they actually feel they need. I mean, in terms of like Rob's uniform, that's fine, but they're not like on duty all day, they might want just something to, you know, slip on over their regular clothes.
What's what it is, the safety vest that they have to wear on sites, they could have it on.
Yeah, just even put that over regular clothes when they go out to a site, simple, well, I don't know if it's simple, but.
They, you can get road guard vests that have stencils on the back, it's a town inspector right on the back of it, so they know. And then if they're ID, they have a clip paint, you can just clip right on, run on.
That's kinda what I'm talking about, but I don't know.
You can have anything you want, stenciled on the back of those.
Okay. Well, there was a motion.
I seconded it.
Seconded it. Thanks.
Okay, item, item G, request of board of campuses compensation for training outside of normal hours in.
So they, they have Tuesdays nine to twelve, sometimes they have to do trainings with the state, and the last one was on a Friday morning, morning into afternoon. So they get a stipend, it's a stipend, right?
They get a stipend.
So they were, they're thinking, they're requesting that they get paid.
They get a stipend, like if the, the training is an hour, or if it's six hours?
No, no, they don't.
Or do, they get a stipend for being here. Oh, yeah.
And in the past, they've gone to their trainings, and they've never asked for additional compensation, so.
We need the stipend for being board of campuses.
So whatever that requires, I think is the point, in the past, if they're at the meeting, like, you know, they go to the fire district.
I don't think in the past, though, that they have done a lot of the.
As much training, that's what you're gonna say, yeah, I mean, they do.
They're trained every year, they have to retrain, retrain, and.
Right.
And they've never gotten paid by the town.
Not extra.
Well, you say extra, but it's hours that they're putting in for the town, because it's required by the town, the state, everybody. And we're not gonna pay them, I think that's pretty not nice.
A couple of that, a year, a month, a month, or?
It's not a lot, no, it's not a lot.
It's not a lot, but I'm gonna be honest, I think the pressure that's on board of campuses people now, given everything we hear across the country, I'm just saying that the people on the board might, might feel like they're under more pressure than they ever used to be.
Well, they are, and this is also.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that, yeah, I think they are, Diane, so my point is, they need to be, they need to go to that training, they can't.
And it's two or three people, it's not like nineteen people that are going to these trainings, and I believe people should be compensated for their time.
So now I have to decide what's gonna be compensated.
Yeah.
Per hour, per hour for the day?
And where are you gonna come, that money's gonna come from?
I think, I, I can look, but I think they might have room in there.
The budget, my, my.
Budget line item. It's only one.
Are they doing, are they doing any training before July first?
Not before July, no.
Okay.
Not, we know.
Let you do some research, and we can revisit it next month.
But they have just done some training, I believe, and that's how this came up, so.
So they, they, so they came and asked if they got additional compensation for the, because they were there, you know, nine to four, they were here there all day, and basically said the past.
Do they do that once a year, twice a year?
I guess it depends, it's an election year, depends on anything that's going on.
Well, if you get to do poll workers, they have to go to the training too, I think.
The poll workers have to, but they have to train as well, it's every year you have to train, because a little something changed.
And why do you pay the poll workers when they go to training?
But we, we don't pay the poll workers, they would pay them for the day, but they do the poll.
Pay the money for the day.
It's part of the requirement.
What do they get paid for the day?
Uh, so the poll workers for the day, it's between one twenty-five, depending on their years of experience, and if they're supervisors, so it's one twenty-five, one fifty, and one seventy-five.
We get paid a different, depending on their different position, they're gonna hold that for the election.
And you guys, good feeling.
So they get a stipend of one forty-four every two weeks for, for doing less.
Year round?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like our compensation is divided up over the, over the, yeah, fifty-two weeks. Same idea.
And they do, okay, they're asking for, they asked for this.
They asked, and I.
I don't know how many trains will come up on the.
If you.
Have to do at least once a year. Probably twice a year. There's also a cyber one that they usually do in the, down at LaSalle, in this, oh, there is on there or something. Usually do the cyber one, because we don't have cyber. So probably two.
But if you say yes to one, you, you know that that's.
And then there probably will be the summit, the election we do in September and November. And then are you gonna compensate them for doing, like, the financial town meeting? I think the fire district and the school pay, right?
The fire district and the school pay, and we pay for financial town meeting.
We pay them?
Excellent.
So they get, or work for the, our financial town meeting? The campuses go? All right, so they get paid for that, and they pay for the other, the fire and the school, so that will all come into this.
Yeah, I just think it should be not a question that we pay them for their training, their time.
Is there a motion?
No.
But you can do some research, okay?
What, what, what if we just do a buck twenty-five?
For the day, for each? They have them in their budget right now for this fiscal year, and their supplies and expenses, where, that's where we take out the poll workers.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Was that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it, second.
What is the motion? To pay one twenty-five per training.
Training day.
Training day.
Second, did you get that?
Seconded, all in, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, H official street map, that, that.
Uh, I, I asked Lynn to put this on, um, only because, well, I've spoken to Carrie, and maybe others have too. Uh, she told me that she had a, there were questions, eight questions, some questions about an accident or something that occurred over there, and they abandoned, I'm not sure where it was, but she said the street map doesn't show that clearly, the part that was abandoned, I'm not sure. Anyway. Do you, do you know about that, Lynn, or?
So it was, um.
I mean, I know the council.
That had been, yeah, the council approved that portion.
Right.
Being abandoned, and, um, I was going to update Matt, but I was working with Steve, trying to figure out what else needed to be done. And honestly, we didn't get around to it, it's been twenty nineteen, my bad, we didn't get around to that, and we need to do Kayla Ritchie.
Well, that's what I thought too, because of Kayla Ritchie's adoption, or whatever, entry into the road system. And, and I would think, I don't know anybody that lives there, but I would think that it would be important to show that those properties are on town roads. Isn't it, wouldn't it be, and I think banks that, I don't know, I haven't asked for mortgage, I don't wanna stay or anything. But if anybody is looking for mortgage on a road like that, they might wanna know.
Yeah.
The status of the road, yes, I've heard that. So that, that was just a concern, nobody, nobody's brought it to my attention. I just thought of that because I know we did this, and I have this Kayla Ritchie file that I'm setting aside, 'cause it's done. And thank you, Dan, 'cause you helped regularly to get that done, I recognize that. Geez, twice a month, my God.
When you put this on, I had, I had.
I know, you said.
We gotta get these things done enough and enough.
Well.
We ain't trying anything else.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know if there's any more, other than if you could just indicate for the minutes tonight that it's a work in progress, like that you're, you're doing that, unless anybody else has any question about it. But thank you, yes, you did, but I just thought it'd be good to know it's a work in progress.
That'd be good there. Item I, budget presentation, financial town meeting.
Uh, that, that's, that's also my request. We, we know that, that that question raised about the way that the capital expense budget, or that part of the budget deals with capital improvements has been raised, and I suspect it will be raised again, and I just thought we, we should know, as a council, I would not address it. I've spoken to Maria, maybe there are items that need to be recategorized. I don't personally have an issue with the way we present it, only because these are accounts that build up that ultimately in some way may affect, um, real capital. Now, maybe, maybe the reveal doesn't, um, but somehow, maybe it does, because it affects how real estate properties affect it, I mean, assessed ultimately. But anyway, I just wondered if we shouldn't be ready for that, uh, discussion, which will probably come out to us a week from tomorrow night.
What kind of a question?
Well, remember that was raised here already last month by Mr. Davis, or at the, or at the budget presentation, I've forgotten where. Remember he had some concerns about some of the items that we present.
Classification?
Yeah, well, we present items.
How it's posted or something like that?
Like a.
Where the money comes from, with the.
No, I, I think it was the items that are included under capital development. Am I right, Maria?
Right, whether or not they're true capital programs.
Okay.
I mean, there's no question that most of them are, uh, you know, when we're putting money aside for playground equipment, or stuff that Rob's gonna need for road, I mean, it's, I've never seen it as an issue, it's the way it's always been done, right, Maria? I mean, we're not doing anything any differently.
Okay.
But, you know, it's, it's yet another issue of which, as far as, you know, what we can, and it shouldn't come from me, I mean, I'm like, what am I, an ash heap or something? Whatever, but what was that, I've forgotten, but I just think we should be, you know, prepared.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Well, and hopefully, a year ago, I was in the hospital, hopefully not, I would, I won't be a dish near. I just don't know if, if anybody else has any concerns, I think it's fine the way it's presented.
I do.
I think.
You do?
You have concerns, and you're fine?
No, I'm fine with it, yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's good you brought it up, though.
Are you good there? You're there?
Uh, we, yeah, well, the only other issue that intrigued me was the issue of the contingency fund, which, if you remember, we call it, that's a misnomer, and it was pointed out that the charter actually calls it discretionary. Then someone said in conversation, well, move to amend the charter, well, I don't, you know.
Change the word.
I think we can change the wording, however, I prefer contingency, and I noticed that the fire district budget uses the very same language. They call it contingency, I was there at the fire district meeting, and I noted, they noticed that they do that, and they take any money that's not left at the end of the fiscal year, and they put it all in that, thought we don't do that.
How is that not, how is the names, how is that not splitting here, so I don't understand?
Well, it kind of is, it kind of is, I honestly think, I like contingency better, 'cause to me.
Just put discretionary slash contingency.
Well, we, we, yeah.
I think that's what I said last time.
We, the point is that everything's already been posted, advertised, I don't think we can change the name now, but if you think maybe going forward that we ought to consider calling it a discretionary fund instead of a contingency fund.
That's a vast idea.
It did pass to change it to discretionary.
Last meeting?
At the, a public hearing.
So, so we're all set?
It's changed, unless you wanna go back, but the charter, yeah, yes.
Oh, you mean you changed it, oh, you changed it after the budget hearing?
The public hearing, it was rightly, there was a motion to change it to discretionary, and we did.
Oh, you did?
And so it's on the budget as discretionary, and on the accounts as discretionary.
Oh, well, now it matches the charter.
To match the charter, if you prefer the other way, then you have to change the charter.
Yeah, no, I get that, oh, I forgot who, I didn't make that motion, one of you did, you one of you.
I thought it was a slash, but it doesn't matter to me either way.
No. Okay, that's enough.
Okay.
I'm done.
Item J, railroad, letter for president concerning truck traffic.
Uh, that was also me, because I got a call from a person that sent me the letter and said, I really would like to have another, you sort in the letter, I'd like to have a public hearing, or be heard, and I said, well, we can't arrange a public hearing, but if you wanna speak to the council, then you should come to a meeting, and I will put it on the agenda so that you can. But I don't see any woman here in the unit, so.
She has been here before complaining.
I, I, well, I know that, and she spoke about that, and I happened to come across minutes as I was doing some filing today, and it was actually about a year ago that she was here, and then I read in the minutes that she'd asked about signage, about speeding limits or something being put on the road, and I don't know, I guess I, I don't think that ever got done. But the point is, she said she liked to come, so I said, well, good, I'll put it on the agenda, and she's not here, so enough.
She's very adamant, she doesn't want, any trucks on that road.
Well, I guess.
And they, it's quiet from like Christmas until like New Year, well, I don't, must go to work with the litter. I spoke too soon, she called up, she's, like, they're building that solar farm on that road, she wants all their trucks stopped, I go to it for a project.
Just go who's that?
You're not gonna win.
No, it's, I, I just, I was, I was responding to a request for a extension.
I'm sorry, there's a truck out there, and they were blocking.
Oh. I don't think it's the lady, it's the street. We're all set.
Are we gonna remove this, or?
Oh, yeah, no, you can remove it from the agenda.
Okay, all right, we're good there, next up is number ten, unfinished business, A. Status, July two thousand twenty-two, communication, number sixteen, Governor Keefer Island Capitol Project.
Picking up paper bags? They're gone.
They're gone?
Yeah. Culminating purpose community facilities matching grant, number one, request for approval, subaward agreement, binding between the state of Rhode Island, acting by and public pandemic recovery office, state agency, and Town of Exeter, some recipient entity.
We need to know, go forward, we have, we're at this point, we have to accept a decline, and you, um, you email the, all the agreements and the contract?
And it looks like when you read through everything, it's gonna cost us money more.
What, what is the issue of, of, of just, of, uh, I don't know how to say it, addressing it, taking care of the records, submitting records, you guys can't do that, you've already got enough to do. So the whole intensity of it seems to be a concern to me, but is there anything in the funding that can go to administration?
So the, the grant itself is a strictly a capital grant, so it has to go toward acquisition or building. So it can't go through to administrative costs, and it can't go to any soft costs or anything like that, no programming if, if there is such an expense.
Well, so it doesn't cost, cover the cost of any thing that we might do there, hiring, or, or giving a stipend?
Having a baby employee.
Well, or giving a stipend to someone. Well, or giving a stipend to someone to come in and do a wellness check or something.
You don't have to give people a stipend for that because I talked to Jessica, who is very keen on if we accept this grant to pay for that building. Jessica does, like, when I, we went through this stuff, and I know she talked to Lynn and Maria, that she does a lot of this stuff already. So this would be right in her wheelhouse, and she could be there. And I would hate for us to walk away from this money because it's a lot of money. And I know, I thought reading through this stuff, we could get administration costs to compensate Jessica for extra stuff that she would need to do to make this grant happen. But Maria's said no. But there's maybe ARPA money that we can potentially give her to cover that for her extra, even though she's got, you know, but she can be the one in charge of making sure the programs, because they got more answers today. They have to do three programs a month, one on education.
Work, education, and health.
Work, education, and health. And she's got some of that stuff in place already. Like, it wouldn't be that big of a jump if we allowed Jessica to be at the helm of this. Yes, there are more things to work out and things to really see. And we can always give it back.
If zero or one person shows up to an event?
Doesn't matter.
That's okay?
Doesn't matter.
Well, yeah, if you're providing it, but nobody's that, how can you force people to come to something?
That's not what they're looking for. They're looking for, if you're running.
If you have a program.
Yeah, if you're doing the program. Like.
The ARPA money's only there for two years.
For two more years, right? So it has to be spent.
What happens in the other three years to pay somebody?
We figure that out.
We figure it out after? I don't think so. Well, we got, we got two years.
Yeah, that's.
But when you read the contract, if you don't follow this contract, you have to give every cent back. Well, that's, isn't that, I mean, they gave us over a half a million dollars. Five hundred and twenty-two, five twenty-five. That's a lot of money. You can't use that for wages. You're creating another position. We're not going to use that for wages. You can't. Can't. So there's only enough money to pay this person for two years. It's still, it's a five-year program. Where's the money going to come from in year three, four, or five? We'll have to budget for it.
Yeah.
I would think a better source of our money, instead of creating another government entity in this building, is start taking care of the people that are underpaid. Instead of creating another. We're getting a half a million dollars to pay for a building. We just paid eight hundred dollars, eight hundred thousand for. It's like a no-brainer. How could anybody dispute that? Read that whole thing. I have looked at it. And there was one paragraph in there. There's one paragraph in there, like maybe seven or eight pages in. That funding's not completely guaranteed. It can dry up whenever they want. That one stuck out.
And like, once Jessica's got this thing up and running and she can apply for other grants for other programs and things that she is doing there, that can compensate.
She can get a percentage of those, if that's correct.
Mm-hmm. That's why I'm not that worried about figuring that out. And like you said, there's also the budget process to make sure it works.
It's an enormous amount of money. I don't think we need to worry about increasing someone's pay for something like that. It's not that, it's how do you pay for it after there's no money to pay that person? Budget for it. Where do you take it from? You accrue taxes. Well, that person gets more than a higher percentage, just like other people this year got a higher percentage. Because we shouldn't be a lot of arguments that that person should get more money because they're underpaid. Same kind of thing.
Exactly. It's there, because we're not talking about giving her, doubling her pay or doing any of that stuff. It's small potatoes in comparison.
I'm not speaking here. I commend you for your enthusiasm, Mike. I'm not, I think that's good. I think it's good. And yours still.
No, thanks. Do you have enthusiasm for this?
I do, well, I do. Only because I just read Jessica's message to us, her email that came to our website, that she lists all the initiatives that she's supporting. And I would think some of them can be, we can give space for these things in the building. If she were, if she could do it, I shouldn't be the ones to have to. I know you've got an account for what's happening.
I would do the reporting for sure.
Well. Well, no, that's all right, no. I don't think you, I don't, I do worry.
From what I saw, like, you can certainly help, but there's, you know, the forms that she plugs the numbers in for this, this, that, and the other thing. And you, of course, review and, or help her. But I don't see you doing it, in my opinion. Maybe the big annual report you might have a bigger hand in, but the monthly things, I don't know. But it seems all doable, in my opinion.
For five hundred and twenty-three thousand, absolutely.
Well, for continued discussion, which is not even a motion on the table to accept the status, because we want it, you want us to vote tonight.
Oh, we need to go. We need to figure it out.
Well, later.
Well, don't we need to vote to support it tonight? Or can we?
Didn't we already do this?
Well.
No, we didn't.
To persuade, to persuade.
So there's, there's one thing that does need to be investigated is the, you might have saw it when you saw the email, there was an attachment for insurance requirements. It's like twelve pages long or something. I need to send that to the trust, which is your direction, and get their opinion whether we need a rider, umbrella, or we're good on that. Because there's a lot of insurance requirement.
So we do that first?
Well.
Continue until next month's meeting?
No.
We can wait until next month.
You can wait?
Because we can always accept, sign, accept, and not do anything.
I am not going to vote for sign any contract. Yeah, we don't know all the laws.
And then not accept it.
We can do a, and we also can do a contingent on.
Because if the time.
With the trust.
Mm-hmm.
Split it up and just.
Get all your information, get all your ducks in a row, continue until next month. Do we have time to do that?
I could get the answer.
There's no time to do that. Is there time?
I could get the answer by seventeen.
I would suggest that we do that, please. Could you, could you call the trust?
Yes.
Tell them, assure me by seventeen.
So no motions, right?
Excuse me?
No.
Do we, excuse me, are we continuing this to the seventeen?
Yes.
The status, be updated town exit according ordinance, chapter fourteen, buildings, building regulations, article four, contact P is nothing yet.
Well, no, we do. I'm sort of ready to draft, considering what I heard from Bill and Carrie's point of view about where we're stuck at.
Okay.
And I'll present that to Jim, Jim can take a look at.
Okay. Okay, item C, director of public works, request for guidance, incident five, West Shore Drive. You done yet?
No, actually, we'll be doing a pavement preservation program the first couple of days of this week and maybe one day next week. So I'll put it on next week's schedule.
I'll leave it on there for one more month.
Yep.
Okay. For those potential charter amendments, November two thousand twenty-four election.
We have three. Do you want four?
What do you got? You got five?
We have the, the change in the grant administration. We'll allow the funds for that. We have the conservation commission going from seven to five. And then the third one was. And the purchasing changes.
Because Lynn says you're on a tight schedule, so get it for the while.
Yeah, okay.
If you add one tonight, we need the questions from July one. If you add tonight, then the question's done.
I'm going to move that those three charter amendments be the ones that we propose to the voters in November.
Second.
Now, in a discussion, that requires a public hearing and whatever else it requires, which will happen prior to the election. But this is the decision we're making today.
The language.
Yeah, which I think we've got. Haven't you already worked on the language?
Yeah, a couple of them are editorial, very simple.
Those are the three questions.
I'll go ahead, yeah. I've been waiting for discussions. So I don't know if this is the proper time to bring this up, but the topic of town manager. We could get the ball rolling. I mean, we need a town manager or we need someone who works here, could be town clerk, that we grant certain authorities to with a stipend or whatever you want to call it, or a town manager. We need to start talking about this. We, the day-to-day activities that unless we meet all the time, there are things that are falling through the cracks. There are, there are, maybe even, oh, I have some notes here. I know that there's a lot of, there's a process we have to go. We have to discuss it. We have to deliberate it. We have to get the clerk to publish thirty days before the election. We have to have a public hearing on the proposals. It's a big process. And we had it going a year or two ago. And then we kind of pulled the plug because there was some resistance to a town manager. And I really think we need to talk about this and give this serious consideration because we need it. Do you guys think we need a town manager?
Make a motion to include it as a fourth question.
And amend it to a motion?
And I will support your motion. Then we will discuss.
Okay, so I, can I amend your motion? Your motion or?
Sure, or we voted on that one, sure.
We didn't vote on that one, yeah.
Oh, we didn't vote, oh, then amend to include a fourth question.
And just make a new motion? Be easier?
Well, we can accept the three.
Well, why don't you amend, and we'll vote on your amendment?
Okay, so I'm not sure how to word it, but.
Don't we have to vote on your first?
No, not if you're amending, then you vote on the amendment, then you come back on.
Okay, I would, I'm not sure how to go about this. So I want to, I want to open up conversation to discuss whether or not we want to think about a town manager or find out from the solicitor or solicitors if we can give that, appoint that authority to a town clerk who may be willing to take on these day-to-day responsibilities, acting in charge of things. She's already here. I think she's open to discussing it. I've already spoken with her. And that might be a way of beginning that process of getting a town manager for a lot less money and a lot quicker, a lot sooner, as opposed to years, and get the ball rolling on this. We can't, we can't just keep kicking the can down the road and ignoring it. We do need it. Put more responsibility on one person, wouldn't be a charter of that one.
My take on it, you'd have to review the entire charter to see what kind of duties, responsibilities, etc. For so long, like, they, they'll need to be charter changes. Like, you may think of a town manager, you're still going to have to go back to the charter and then change the charter to authorize that person to have certain authority.
So you know, I didn't really, there really was a motion there, so there's still to discuss.
Yes.
Well, it's kind of a hard motion for him to make because he's doing two or three things. And if you had said town manager, I was going to, I was going to support it and then discuss. Because that issue has been brought to the public before, and it can be brought to the public again, if that's your, if that's your question.
No, that's, it's a cleaner one.
Well, it's cleaner in that you're creating a position. Now, if the, here's, if, if you make a motion, I'll second it.
I make a motion. She's dollar four.
As a men, amend the motion.
Okay.
To, to add a fourth question.
A question of town manager?
Yes, please. And I'll, and I'll second.
That's my amendment.
Amendment. And for discussing your amendment, here's what I want to say. We could put it on the charter as it's been before, I'm sorry. We can put it on the ballot as it has before to, and we can either call it an administrator, which is something that people are doing more like Kevin Breen is the town administrator. But you can call it manager, that could be split in gears. If the voters approve it, it doesn't mean we automatically rush at the next time we meet. Okay, now we're going to, now we have to have a manager. No, but at least it gives us the authority to investigate such a position. Frankly, you know, there's, we can't fit one here, but we might have room eventually when we decide what we're going to do on the street. So my point is simply, it can be a fourth question. We've done it before. We can do it again if these folks think we should ask. I don't have a problem asking. And we've asked before. He is laughing because he's talking.
I'd say get a mayor.
Stop. That's all I wanted to say.
Can I just make a comment just to clarify? Administrator, manager, at least as far as I know, there, it does make a difference. A manager is typically, when you talk about a town manager, typically a person who is appointed by the town council to that position. Town administrators, as I understand it, tend to be elected positions. So if you put it out to the people to elect a town administrator, that person will run. Generally, that's my understanding. There is a difference usually between town administrator, town manager. Manager generally is a council-appointed person.
Do you think Kevin Breen's?
Lincoln has a, has an administrator who is an elected position. East Greenwich has a manager who is a town council-appointed position.
And North Kingston has a manager too.
And I, I don't.
But Kevin Breen, I don't know if he's elected or appointed.
He's appointed, he was appointed. He's a manager, town manager.
See, there's, that's the difference. So it's not just semantics like the other ones.
That's what we're talking about here, town manager.
Was semantics, this is not. This is a, this is a big, it's typically a big difference when a person hears administrator versus manager. But manager, isn't that what you discussed already in public hearings?
Already? Before?
Yeah, you've had hearings.
Yeah, we have, it's everything.
I think this is a big step to just throw it on there, you know, without a lot more discussion. Do you know what I mean? I just think it's a huge step and a lot of money, too.
Well, like I said, if it were approved, we wouldn't necessarily have to move in that direction. We, and I say that because we had a deputy treasurer's position in place for years and that we never called it up until we realized, I'm talking previous council realized that something had to happen. I have nothing to do with this, young lady, that was before. This was before. So, listen, it's a point of, it's whatever. I mean, I recognize, I think we all do, that routine things that could be done right more expeditiously.
Day-to-day activities.
Well, they could be.
You mean once a month, maybe twice a month? It's a special meeting? There's day-to-day activities.
Dan could probably do more than he does, like, you know, executive director. And then say, here's what I did. We'd say, well, we don't want you having to do that again. You're out, but that won't happen. That doesn't happen. I've been there, Dan, I've sadly used that. Okay.
So that's the discussion we want, sir? Yeah. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, okay.
Well, ask who's opposed.
It's already been to the voters three times.
So, so the vote is three to two? Right?
I voted in favor of it, so.
Yes, four to one.
Oh, sorry.
I voted no.
Sorry.
It's only years ago. Get a mayor instead.
I don't know, man. No, man. Can, can we just ask Ken if he'll pull out that line, which we had used.
That would start it. Okay. Maybe you can check out which managers.
So yours was.
We have.
We'll have to go back to that. We don't have to go back to that.
Uh, we voted on the amendment, so now we'll vote on the, on the original motion as amended.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
That's four.
Okay.
Better than four.
Yeah, because, might as well, we can pass it.
It's, probably will pass.
All right.
We have three in line.
Okay, E, status, R I two fifty commission, Exeter Historic Preservation Commission.
There is work being done here, but I, I know nobody's here to tell you.
Leave it on?
Yeah.
Leave it in case someone wants to comment.
Yep, Department of Public Works, Town Property Damage Mail Road.
Yeah, do you leave that on? Because I'm just waiting on a couple more documents.
Did you get the police report?
Partially, partially, there's more documents. They gave, they, no, they gave the state, but they didn't give mine, or the other gentleman who was on site, so I'm waiting. So they gave the state police officer's report, but not what I wrote, nor the contractor, so it's incomplete, so I can't move forward with Jim.
I called the state police today on that issue.
Oh.
And the guy that I dealt with to get me the report the first time wasn't in.
Okay.
So I'm gonna see if I can hear from him tomorrow. They're, they're saying that the report that I got was on a thumb drive, and they probably didn't download the, the two written requests.
So, I mean, I could go back to the original lady who told me she was so swamped that she couldn't get it, and it just never surfaced. Um, I could go back that route. They're still trying to get those two documents, so I can finish that up. Anything?
Okay, uh, G, status, welcome site, are you getting out of town?
The site, well, we've just been signed now, so, we'll be coming, I gotta get Rob's assistance on one.
Okay, H, building uses and improvement plans, number one, six seventy-five ten yard road, parking lot, chip ceiling. B, side of building, ramp, automatic door, and launch.
Yeah, so I was talking to Rob about those improvements outdoors here, and we're gonna go forward with chip ceiling, the five, the parking lot relining. Side of building, we, the ramp is supposed to be handicapped accessible, I'm not sure it's really wide enough. And if wheelchair comes up, I can't get in, 'cause the door.
Yeah, we need a button.
We need a button, and that awning is coming away from the building inside, and it needs to be replaced for safety purposes. So, um, some of this we may have to go up to bid for, I checked on awning prices, I probably don't, I don't think that's gonna have to go up to bid, but I have to get three written quotes. Automatic door, I don't know yet. The rent, um, Robin Company are gonna work up, build that. So, just wanna let you know that we're gonna be working on these projects going forward. If we have to come, go to bid, we'll let you know. Right?
Okay, uh, Item two, seven forty-two, ten, Rob.
Keep, well, let's keep it on, so we.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna keep it on, yeah.
But thank you, Lynn, for moving forward, because we know this is a longstanding problem. So thank you, and thank you for that.
I was just wondering if we could ask them if we could hold that meeting over there?
Wanna call Mr. Benoit, we could ask?
Yeah, because I thought that would give us all an opportunity.
Seven, eight, nine, two weeks from tonight.
Yeah. I need to know why Wednesday next week.
And the public got the invite too, a lot of, a lot of locals, lots of.
The stuff's out of there.
People have it done by then, you could ask.
I'll, I'll, yeah, okay.
But.
Okay, yeah. Just what you can, Rob, Rob.
That, that could, well, that could be an issue, though.
Not gonna be a work session, no.
We have two things on, too.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, number eleven, communications, the only thing we have left, Diane, you've got number twelve and number five.
I wonder if we have to include twelve? That was the rental? The rental? So those were in the consent agenda, in the listed.
Okay.
So we can prove the consensus together, and then remove them, so we'll prove when. And then five was the other one?
No. That was. She took five off of the vote.
Oh, yeah, well, okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
There was only one.
That brings us to the section of session, I'm gonna, I think I wish to take a brief five for the break. Six, all in favor? Aye?
No.
Yeah, we need to, we need to vote.
I don't.
We gotta wait two more, once he moves the camera away, we can stack them. It's weird, somebody.
Yeah, that's kinda.
Do you wanna keep stacking them, or you wanna?
Oh, you, oh, so you took them all out of that row?
Right, there was two rows, there was two rows here.
All right.
These things too big, they fall over.
Right.
So, so we can just start another stack right here, and then we'll just slide it in.
I see what you're saying now.
Yeah, 'cause they get too big, there's, there's two more rows.
They are definitely a bit dangerous type of.
So yours, get the.
No, but they. An open house.
These don't, so.
So, they're needing theirs, no? Just like this, they'll be.
I don't know, and then.
No, but I heard that Dixie told me.
Yeah, he said there won't be no, nothing like that, so my idea.
In my opinion, that was said because.
I, I, I'm sure there was a case.
Because that wasn't what they were there for. That's like, down the road, yeah, that's a, that's a different problem.
Right, right.
It's interesting, though.
Yeah. It's gonna, it's gonna be a two-room community place, you know, what people think, do things, I don't care, I'm not gonna be around. Whatever, whatever happens.
Building?
Whatever happens.
So, Ken's got a curve for.
No, 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 I said it before, it's just an option.
No. Bathroom.
What play? We don't have, hey, we, we don't have that, where's the.
No, you said no, you were right, we need a room. I like the brown this morning tonight.
Well, thank you.
What do you call it?
Brown is like, Jamesian.
I wonder the morning color?
I don't have that.
He used to wear it more.
Were you on my hair with brown?
No, yeah, because we didn't have internet, like.
You didn't get, you think you gave it to us?
No.
Well, we need it, we need it for the seven T.
I had great hair.
I get the right one, this, he didn't have.
As a matter of fact, I cook it out.
It's twenty twenty four, Exeter can make that a coffee.
You know, it's funny, if you talk about the big statements, you know, I was doing, I was, one of the four hours, I was only at four hours. I'll be here in five hours.
I tried a couple of cold.
Damn.
Is this for the inside?
I get cold, I have to be forced to check it, and the guy can really do it on Saturday, so I think I'll be on Saturday. Well, James reports. You know, I try to, you know, like, we don't have, we start from the corner there, I try to, I might as well do something for these people, you know, they're paying all these wild taxes. And I remember.
I love this, look.
So I, I try to eliminate the people, you know? It doesn't happen all the time.
It's still out, like a short bump.
You did, you did.
It's better now.
It's, 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 it's. Wait, say, did. Oh, what's my own? What was still made to say?
They know somebody has to come in.
Well, I.
There's animals there, there's no doubt, there's no.
I came across, I came across minutes where I said, there was some discussion, I thought that it was, we needed to bring. I said it publicly, it's in the record.
Probably she wrote it, because she knows she didn't want to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I thought that.
Yeah. Yeah, no.
Well, Phil, Phil wants to go any day. He wants to go.
You wanted me to stay, right?
I'll put, I do.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Am I the reason you're on that, that's right?
Into executive session for a power item, A, the item General Law forty-two dash forty-six dash five, page three, security, number one, pound sergeant. That was a motion.